Good evening. Thank you for joining us for the monthly meeting of the business meeting for the Unified Government of Athens-Clark County. We appreciate your time and your interest in being here. If you're joining us remotely, you may access an agenda online at athens-clarkcounty.com. Or for those of you with us tonight, there's agendas on the table just to the right as you exit the doors. If you have a cellphone with you tonight, please turn it or any other device, please turn it off or to silent. There'll be four opportunities tonight for public input. The consent agenda, which are items 1 through 15, old business items 16 and 17, a public hearing on recommendations from the Planning Commission, items 19 through 21, and one final opportunity at the end of business for any item that's not on tonight's agenda. Our rules of commission allow all citizens three minutes for comment. A timer on Ms. Bratton's desk will turn yellow at two and a half minutes, so please have your comments finished by the time it turns red at three minutes, so I won't need to interrupt you. If you brought handouts and you wish to share them with us, please give them to Mr. Berryman, and he'll make sure we get them. Ms. Bratton, would you call the roll, please?
Dickerson.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Wright.
President.
Neesmith.
President.
Vale.
Here.
Harrod.
Gertz.
Here.
Thank you. We'll have a motion to approve the minutes of February 7.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Written communications, Ms. Bratton?
No, have none.
Okay. And this is a time that we'll take public input on the consent agenda, and those are items 1 through 15. And if you'll approach the podium and let us know which item you're speaking to and give us your name and address. The mic's open for whoever wants to speak to us.
I'm Marilyn Wolf for Gatz. I live at 345 Beachwood Drive, Athens. And I am here tonight really as a representative of former member of the Athens Cultural Affairs Commission, Public Art. And I'm actually here just to say thank you. Sorry, I'm still running. This really is to say thank you, thank you, thank you for your support, for the community's support in keeping the Cultural Affairs Commission going to this point. This is a really important evening for us. To approve the Public Art Master Plan is enormous. If you think about exactly seven years ago, when former mayor Heidi Davison appointed a task force to figure out what the heck to do about public art? What would be the benefits to our community? How would we form a plan? And how would we finance that? Since that time, that particular year, 2010, when that task force was developed, we passed an ordinance before the end of the year. And then Mayor Denson and the commissioners assisted us in appointing members of the new commission. I can tell you, at that point, none of us knew anything about how to run this kind of thing. But the exciting part of this is that throughout this period, support has grown. We have worked together, the commissioners with the assistance of the cultural affairs commissioners, with the support of the commissioners here, which has grown and grown, and the mayor, with the support of our community, people who work within government. I can't tell you how many times we went to a variety of people in departments who were both generous in information and assistance. We learned how to develop a foundation for this commission, what were the important things to our community to do. And our ultimate goal, big goal, was to develop a Public Art Master Plan. So I just want to say thank you from all of us. Thank you for your support. Thank you for the support of those who have worked in Athens-Clark County government. Thank you to all of the people in the community who took an interest in submitting ideas and thoughts and visions for the Public Art Master Plan. And thank you for allowing us to bring this all together successfully in what I consider tonight to be a very exciting step ahead. There are lots of wonderful things that will be done in public art, but we now have a guide to do that, so that it makes the community proud, will make our town an even more beautiful place to be, and will represent Athens-Clark County residents in the most positive way. So thank you.
Ms. Gatz, don't sit down yet, because I want to say something while you're standing there. Marilyn Wolf for Gatz was the first chair of the Cultural Affairs Foundation, and actually tried to leave sooner than she did, but we couldn't find anybody else with the kind of drive and commitment that she had. And I personally think it might not have survived without your leadership. So thank you so much. I think we owe her a round of applause.
Well, thank you. Very generous. Let me tell you, it was a dedicated group of people. I've never seen as dedicated a group.
I know it was a dedicated group, but it had to have a dedicated leader to get us here. So thank you.
But thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak to us on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll come behind the rail. Is there any commissioner that would like to remove an item from consent for discussion?
Number 10, please.
Okay.
Number 7, 11, and 12.
Anybody else? Okay.
I got here just a little late. Can I speak on these items?
Which items are you talking, on consent agenda?
Be adopted.
1 through 15, one of those on 1 through, sure, come on up. I saw you. Yeah. Don't want to freeze you out.
Well, you know, you changed, but I didn't have the time to get home and get cleaned up. My name is Mark McConnell, 2510 Commerce Road.
We can tell, Mark.
All right. So anyway, the ordinance related to control of vegetation. I have a conservation plaque in my front yard. It doesn't stop anybody from going over there and mowing down all the bramble and the other wildlife habitat that is my yard. And I like it like that. I live out on 441. I don't have neighbors, per se, and, you know, there's a lot of habitat out there. I've got a big garden. I like the bees. So will this affect me? Because I don't know the whole thing, but I just wanted to say, you know, if we're out there making people run two-cycle gas equipment to cut down vegetation, well, our earth is one of Jerry's, like, no, this doesn't have anything to do with that. Okay. Thank you very much, then.
Mark, we don't speak to people at the podium, but I don't think it's going to affect you.
Okay.
And it can be clarified during our discussion if anybody wants to do that.
All right. Thanks so much.
Turn off the consent agenda. No.
You want to take it off?
Take it off, please.
Yes, okay. Okay. Okay, this is the time that anyone that wants to speak to any item on our old business, which is items...
Madam Mayor, we need to vote for the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, but we vote on what's left of the consent agenda. Okay, our consent...
I move for the adoption of, here's ordinances, I'll let him read the ordinances.
Yeah, we've got three ordinances, yeah.
If you don't mind me interrupting, I'm sorry. Some of those were just taken off for discussion. They still may be put back on, so we should wait to vote.
Well, if they've taken them off, we'll just vote them one at a time like we do.
Okay.
Okay. I think that's just as easy as trying to figure out which ones. Go ahead, Mr. Berryman.
There are two. The first is an ordinance to amend the code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to parking restrictions on Witt Davis Road and for other purposes. The next is an ordinance to amend the FYI 2017 annual operating and capital budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide funding for the airport air service development program and for other purposes.
Okay, we have a motion for the adoption of the consent.
Adoption of items 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 9, 13, 14, and 15.
Have a motion is second. On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now, this is the time that anyone that would like to speak to our old business items, which are items 16 and 17, if you'd come to the podium and let us know which one you're speaking to, and give us your name and address.
Hello, my name is Julie Roth, 595 Hill Street in Athens, and I'm here to speak on the special events permitting process. So I am the past chair of the Board of Directors of Athfest Educates, and I think I'm the only board member who doesn't have children and is away on spring break, so I got the short straw to be here. So I'm pretty much just going to read what I prepared. I'm here to urge the commission to ask the GOC to come back with the more appropriate tiered insurance requirements than are currently proposed. When Mayor Denson assigned the committee to review the special events permit process, the hope was for nonprofits that the city would work to make the permitting process easier and more affordable for us. Unfortunately, the review has instead led to a proposal that will create an enormous financial burden on our event and may cause us to perhaps question our ability to operate the event at all. The proposal drastically increases the insurance requirements for Athfest Music and Arts Festival will be required to go from paying $2,148 annually in insurance premiums to $11,648 annually under the new guidelines. As you may or may not know, the festival is barely profitable for Athfest Educates. In fact, the projected profit for this year is only $1,100 with the $2,100 insurance premium that we are currently planning on purchasing. Meeting the proposed insurance requirements will mean the festival will lose $8,400 just this year. I understand your responsibility to protect the city and its resources, but the levels we feel are recommended exceed what is necessary and far exceed what nonprofits and their events can afford. Our research indicates that comparable communities of our size do not require umbrella coverage anywhere near the levels that are recommended. Asking us to suddenly increase our insurance requirements by 550% is unwarranted. Athfest Educates hosts Athfest because it allows Athens to show off its musical talent, because it gives local and regional visual artists a chance to share their work with residents and visitors, because it is a major economic driver for many downtown businesses during the slower summer months, and most importantly, because it gives all members of our community, regardless of their socioeconomic status, an opportunity to come downtown, bring their family and friends, and enjoy the true artistic culture that is Athens for free. I am not a UGA alumni, so when my daughter moved to Athens to attend UGA, my husband and I planned our visits around the two big non-UGA events, Twilight and Athfest. These experiences drew us to this vibrant city, significantly contributed to our decision to move here. I hope you will think about what in Athens without Athfest would mean for the community, the economy, and the culture of Athens. If you have ever found yourself bragging about the unique elements that make Athens so special, and you've included our music and arts culture in your list, I encourage you to vote no on the tiered insurance requirements that are recommended.
Thank you, Ms. Roth.
Daniel Robertson, 5822 Jefferson River Road, Athens. Madam Mayor and council, thank you for listening to us today. I'm also here to speak about the special events permit revisions. I am the events coordinator for Athfest this year. I've only been in Athens for a couple of years. I also own a business in Athens. And looking over the GOC newly proposed requirements, I'd like to reiterate the fact that the risk levels in which the umbrella clause is at 5 million per occurrence and 10 million per occurrence seems relatively high in comparison to other cities of the same size. In the research that I've done, I've definitely noticed a far lesser occurrence minimum for the insurance, the umbrella liability insurance. And I would do, I do ask the council to look at those rates a little bit more in detail before they vote, because like Julie said, Athfest does run the risk of not being able to continue to occur in years in the future if the expense dramatically increases. This is the first time I've spoken in front of good-bitten people in a while, so I apologize.
You're doing it fine.
And then I'd also like special consideration for 501(c)(3)'s within the requirements. I understand that the safety of the patrons and everyone involved is the utmost priority, but 501(c)(3)'s do not stand to make a substantial profit, and our goal is to put money back into the community, and I think it's vitally important for us to realize that and to make sure that these umbrella liability insurance levels are appropriate to what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Anyone else wish to speak to one of those two items?
Good evening. I'm Jim Anderson, 186 Hidden Hills Lane. I would like to reinforce the statements of the two previous speakers regarding the event insurance. I believe that if this bill is passed, that the objective will be achieved of providing safety for our community, but it will do it for a reason that is unexpected, and that is that the events will not take place and there will be no need for protection. These are community events. This includes not just Athfest, but things like the Twilight Criterion, which have great economic benefit for the community as a whole and provide for wonderful entertainment value for our citizens. So I urge you to try to avoid this massive increase in insurance expense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
I'm going to get all my words in tonight. Mark McConnell, 2510 Commerce Road, Athens, Georgia 30607. I am on the Athens Human Rights Festival Committee, and every year, along with the Earth Day Festival that we did last year, which we can't do this year because G-Day is on Earth Day, so football is apparently more important than earth. So this raise in the insurance is going to affect all of these groups that put on festivals downtown, and it is such an important part of our community and what makes Athens so special. To lose these events because we can't afford to do them, or we have to take them to a different venue and then it's not happening downtown would just be a huge loss for the city as a whole. The streets of Athens are public spaces for people to, you know, walk and be there anyway. So are we really protecting, getting that much more protection out of this? If somebody falls down and trips on a curb and breaks their leg or something, whose fault is it? You know, did they slip on some slime that was in the street from the night before? You know, where do we really balance this out as to like how much a group should have to pay to use a section of the street? And especially with these nonprofit events, it is very hard for these nonprofits to raise the money to do these things. I know when we did the Earth Day last year, I scrambled around for about a month just to raise the money to put that on. I would hope that everybody would consider this before they vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Anyone else? We're looking at 14 and 15. Seeing none, we'll come behind the rail, and we'll start with item number one, and that was yours, Melissa.
Mr. Neesmith.
Mr. Neesmith, I'm sorry. You want to start the discussion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'll just restrict my comments to the question at hand, which is about managed natural landscapes, we'll call it, because we define that in this proposed ordinance to mean designed intentional and maintained cultivation of native or non-native grasses such as wildflowers, Forbes. Do you know what a Forbes is? It's a flowering non-grass plant, yes. Anyway, I digress. Ferns, shrubs, or trees that is self-sustaining with a minimum resort to artificial methods of plant care and that serves at least one of the following purposes: attraction and aid to wildlife, offset and control of potential or existing soil loss, enrichment and stabilization of soil fertility, and it goes on with some more things. Managed natural landscapes are not included in the 10-inch height limitation, as long as they don't impede sidewalks or doorways to a house. So I think Mark will be happy with that.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this ordinance. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
I need to read that.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill. Actually, you're going to need the next two as well, so go ahead.
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to control of vegetation and for other purposes.
Well, actually, you've already read the other two, so I'm sorry. We'll now go to item number 7. Whose was that?
Aye. All in favor?
I thought I said that.
Uh-uh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank y'all. It's a good thing I got somebody over there keeping track. Item number 7, who took that off?
I did. I did. And this was just in light of the library's budget request for additional security. I asked the manager's office to look into the possibility of maybe seeing if the SROs could leave, especially the SRO that's assigned to Clark Middle School, since they're only assigned to the middle and not to the elementary schools. And I'd like for him to share the response he received from Chief Freeman, just so it's available for the public.
Great.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the commission. I did have an opportunity to speak to the chief today, and he did clarify that the shift that the SRO works is essentially coincides with the shift of the staff working, whether teachers, administrators, et cetera. And so it's not a possibility to have those individuals transfer or work a couple of extra hours during a shift, so to speak, over at the library. When we do see police officers over at the library, they're working essentially hard to work part-time. And so, and considering that 75% of their salary is paid for by the school system, we certainly, you know, the time that they spend over at the school is really dedicated for that purpose. So unfortunately, we really don't have an opportunity to have an SRO go over and work additional hours, so to speak, over at the library.
Thank you. And I mainly want to do that because I know a lot of us are still trying to figure out a way to help the library with that, so I wanted to, we did look into it, but it's just not a possibility. So with that, I motion for approval of number 7.
And I actually had a significant conversation with Chief Stevens, who's the head of security at the schools today, so, and I had some thoughts about it, I'll share with y'all later. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Harry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And who took number 10 off? Y'all were doing it so fast and furious. Melissa?
I took it off. This is the Leisure Services Scholarship Program, and we're, we have a proposal from Leisure Services to implement some charges to this scholarship program. We saw, we had a work session on this and saw a lot of evidence that we're getting a lot of no-shows, folks who are on the scholarship program and are taking up a spot in the camps but are not showing up to actually send their kid to the camp, and so you end up with other kids missing out. So there's a good case to be made to implement these charges, and they came up with a tiered system of 25%, 50%, and 75% charges. And I spoke with commissioners Hamby and Gertz and Neesmith about this. We kind of had some concerns that there are still families out there that might still have trouble making that final percentage, or families with multiple children. It is a real hardship for families that have multiple children. So I want to go ahead and propose that we accept these changes to the scholarship program, but also direct staff to devise a sponsorship and/or gift certificate program through which additional assistance can be granted to families qualifying for scholarships, as well as to those with multiple children enrolled. This program should be ready for implementation by summer 2018 program registration, so that would be next spring. That would give staff about a year to come up with something.
Thank you.
Second motion.
I have a motion is second. Any further discussion? Ms. Hamby?
And I'm not changing anything, but I guess I would ask if, instead of direct staff, direct manager, evidently that's a technicality that they get their gander up about that, so probably we should say direct manager.
I'll accept that.
And it actually makes us comply with our charter, too.
It does, yeah. It makes you comply with the charter.
So y'all want, are y'all want to accept changing that to manager rather than staff?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, great.
What if I said no?
Well, we'd have to vote twice. You'd have to do a substitute motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second amendment.
Actually, I think I've got a, I asked the manager to look into something, if he could, I'm sorry, this isn't a manager.
That's all right.
Look into something if he could. Go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner. One of the things I wanted to really point out and for us to be mindful of as we prepare, as you all prepare to vote, is the complexity of the fact that, you know, we've not realized a significant amount of revenue at this point in time, and so further delaying does create a bigger hole for us, so to speak. Additionally, with respect to, you know, the requests for fundraising activities, things of that nature, the Leisure Services staff has recently hired a new employee that is focused on this particular effort. And so they're already moving forward with some of the recommendations that are being put forth. So I want you to be mindful of that, and there's an awareness that I want to make sure that you all have in your back pocket. But the bigger issue is it's really further delaying the implementation of the recommendations that came forth at our last work session. It does create somewhat of a challenge for us going forward.
It's my understanding that this tiered program, oh, it does go in July 2017. So I would propose that it not be delayed, but be made available for the following year. You know, so that gives staff that full year to come up with that additional program.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. Listen, would you clarify, are you saying that you would like to amend the motion so that it, that staff implement changes in July of 2017 instead of 2018?
And you can do the scholarship next year. Just means you have a year.
And Jessica, did you say that's what we get from 2018?
Okay, the other piece in 2018. Yeah, yeah. The changes that are proposed by staff should be implemented right away, that give them an additional year for that, you know, additional gift certificate or sponsorship program.
He's just asking you to change your motion to 2017 instead of 18 for the first part. Right.
Oh.
In bullet point 1.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's a typo. That's a typo. I'm sorry. Yeah, that should be 2017.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Yeah, the one that refers to the changes as staff proposed.
So I'll accept that amendment as well.
Yeah, thank you for catching that.
Okay. Does anybody know what we're voting on?
Yeah, I just, just a comment. So I think what that does is that'll give us a little bit of time to see sort of who's being affected, address those issues, maybe even see if it's something we can do, you know, in the meantime. So I think that's a great amendment.
Well, I think absolutely both commission and the staff, nobody wants to exclude any child that wants to participate in a program from it, and I think this takes care of it. Ms. Lee, thank you.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
We have a motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
The next two are mine, so I'll save you from asking.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to say, obviously, the World of Wonder Park, the new park, the old park, all of it is a huge asset to the east side of Athens and is a destination for a lot of people, not just in Athens-Clark County, but around the region. My concern at the last meeting was that we were going to take out a lot of trees, and I wanted to commend staff like Keith Sanders and Billy Pott and Justin Johnson, who've been working, to try to see if there's any way we can save. I think there's a total of 33 trees that are out there. Everybody should have gotten a nice little map. They do a cute little, love this map. We did look at whether or not we could save trees. We are being able to save out of the 33, 15, which is 53% of the trees, so better than half of the trees will be saved. But it's, you know, it's a necessary evil in some regards. We need to have, did I not count that right? No.
15 is not more than 50% of 33.
So it's close enough.
You wanted to add, must have added something wrong.
But it's still, it's still a nice number.
Sorry. Okay. I got it backwards, sorry. Thank you. I did not major in math, so I'm just talking about, my husband will tell you that, too. Anyway, we're going to save 15 of the trees. And the key thing was to look at the trees that, there were some sort of in the middle, if you guys got the, if you got a chance to look at it, some of the ones could be saved, but it was questionable whether or not they might actually survive. I mean, unfortunately, the weather's already changed on us quite dramatically, so to try to transplant trees or any of that kind of stuff would be questionable. And then others didn't have enough space around the roots to make sure that we wouldn't damage them in the process of doing the grading and whatnot for the parking space. So I just wanted to at least point out that staff did attempt and has been able to say, you know, earmark or save some of the trees that are out there. I also, though, did want to mention, and I guess I'm not really sure if I want to, how I want to do this, but there was, because nerdy people let me keep all their stuff from 13 years ago, there were memorial trees that were bought. My husband and I bought one, several other people did, too. Nobody knows which ones they are, because the people who were in charge of it left town, you know, have already left. They've, you know, moved on with their lives, it's been 13 years. But I would like to try to make sure in some form or fashion that we, at one of the trees, maybe one that isn't moved, that we put just a little plaque that says, "The trees in this area, you know, are, you know, memory of the southeast, Friends of Southeast Clark Park," which is the group that fundraised for this, for the original playground. So if we can do something like that, I can vote to approve this. So I guess I'm amending the motion to ask that a plaque be added, a small marker be be added on the base of one of the existing trees that just notes that the trees, some of the trees out there were planted for that purpose.
I'll second that.
But I have a question, was the original motion, did the original motion include this, though, or is this new?
Um, hang on, let's see, maybe not.
I don't think it did, did it?
Um, no, so.
So, so your motion is to...
So I need to amend that we, that the 15 trees that were identified by staff be, be marked as saved, preserved, and then that a plaque be added to one of those trees, a small marker of some sort.
Well, how about call this exhibit one and include exhibit one in it, make it clear.
Works for me.
Does that work, Bill? Mr. Bearman?
Just call it attachment.
Attachment, okay. And I, and I have a question before, we don't have a second yet, but we'll, would these, oh, we have a second, okay. But we're still in discussion, I have to, if nobody else does. Were these trees that were scheduled to be cut down?
Um, some of them were and some are not. So you mean cut down because of the parking lot?
Yeah, to, to build the parking lot.
Yeah, one, two, three, four.
Well, you don't, you don't have to tell...
Well, they designed, when they designed it, they designed it in such a way to minimize the number of trees that were going to have to be cut down. I guess maybe that's a better way to put it.
But you significantly increased that, though.
Yes.
Well, we owe another thanks to a commissioner tonight, because that's another very good thing that's been done for our community. Thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Move on to item number 12, Ms. Dickerson, it's yours, too.
Yep, that's mine again. I just wanted to make a point, I had asked at the, at the agenda setting meeting, I suggested that we look into designing the runway to be 150 feet wide instead of 100 feet wide in order to meet FAA standards for the larger aircraft that are currently landing at our airport. But since then I've talked, spoken with Tim Begley, the airport director, and to widen the runway requires quite a few things. You have to have a, there's a trigger, you have to have 250 touch-and-goes or 500 operations a year. We don't have that yet, so they're not going to, DOT has to authorize a study of the operations, since we don't have that, they can't start that process. Once we do, they can, but, but right now they don't. And then if that's, if they find that it's justified, then there has to be an environmental assessment before any funding can be provided, and that's funding, 90% funding from federal. So we're sort of stuck. It's unfortunate, because it'd be nice to be able to do this all at the same time, because we're finding that, you know, we've got issues, you know, with having to dig up a runway when we're trying to get somebody, you know, airlining her. But I just wanted to at least explain that, since I brought it up, but with that, I'll, I'll motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We will now get to item number 16, which is the COD, well, it's actually Government Operations Committee report. But Bill, would you read the ordinance for us before we start?
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia with respect to special events and for other purposes.
Okay. Ms. Link, did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, we had some contention within the Government Operations Committee about this, because as has been pointed out, it was intended for us to address this issue, to make things easier for our special events, maybe a little more affordable. And, you know, we, we discussed deferring parking revenue, and that'll save them, you know, thousand, a couple thousand bucks. But then staff came forward with all these additional insurance requirements, which add thousands upon thousands of dollars to their costs. And we were given a chart listing other communities that don't seem to have those umbrella insurance costs. And, and I've heard from a lot of organizers of these events and other folks in the community who are really concerned that we might no longer have these events. And as someone who has participated in the organization of some of these events, you know, the Human Rights Festival was one of the first things I got involved in when I moved to Athens 23 years ago, and I sat on the board of Athfest for several years. You know, these really make our community special, and if we were to impose these onerous regulations on them, I fear that we would lose a lot of our events, not just our big events, but some of our more medium-sized events that are kind of off the cuff, that, that seem to happen sporadically and that really make our community special. So I am proposing that we go ahead and approve B and C, which is the deferred parking revenue, so that'll save folks some money, and the revised definition of special events, but that we delay the insurance requirements so we can move forward with our FYA team budgeting process and possibly look at additional funding sources or have a, a more in-depth discussion about the need for these insurance requirements, or maybe another look at ACC's insurance coverage, and if that can perhaps cover these events. So the wording is delay A, the insurance requirements, to be reconsidered after allowing the mayor and commission to consider an FYA team budget allocating resources for additional insurance coverage for special events.
Okay, second. Any other discussion?
I'll just say a few comments, Madam Mayor, if you don't mind. And it certainly was a good discussion, and I think what it did in our government ops was highlight the importance of special events for this community. Certainly, we've had some that have been, been active in our community for, for numbers of years, Athfest, as Commissioner Bailey can attest to that, and, and Twilight are two of the, two of the bigger ones, and they're, they're well-received in our community and very important part of our community, not only in the sort of entertainment that they bring, but the fact that they bring people together in this community who, who may not know one another, and, and it's always good to get to know your neighbors and who lives in the community. So we did have a good discussion, and staff did what we asked them to do. We asked them to, to take a look at this, and they did. And, and, you know, staff is doing their job and looking at the risk associated with whatever it is that this government does. But I think some of us on, on the committee felt like if, you know, we can, we can accept the, the recommendation, but, but certainly along with that recommendation, if we're, if we're making the requirements, then the government ought to work with our partners who are doing these special events to help them make them affordable. So I appreciate the work that's done by staff and the committee members.
Mr. Gertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm supporting this commission-defined option, because really I think there are two key issues. I mean, the first is the rationality of the enhanced umbrella insurance, and, and maybe some other folks feel fully comfortable with that, but, but I'm not there yet. I may be there at some point. I think we all want to make sure that we protect human health and livelihood and protect property in the community as well, but, but I'm, I'm just not altogether convinced that this is the way to do that. It, it may be the case, I mean, I'm not foregoing that conclusion, but this gives us some more time to consider that and to dig a little bit more deeply. And really, the second thing is, is I think what both Mike and Melissa highlighted, which is that these community events, these large special events are community-defining. I mean, these, these make Athens Athens, and these are the kind of things that, as we heard from one of the speakers, not just generate some income, some revenue, and some goodwill for a weekend, but these bring people here, these sell homes, these bring quality employees to our community. And so these are exactly the kind of things that I think the government ought to have a role in supporting, and that's why when we move into the budget period, I think particularly for these events that are nonprofit-sponsored, we, the government, ought to be willing to say, you know, if, if these are rational insurance levels, we ought to be willing to put some funds into that insurance coverage. And, you know, as, as I've thought about this over the last couple of weeks, I've thought, you know, should we be sponsoring the insurance ourselves, and we're doing it for several events, you know, we might be even looking at a lower insurance rate than should Athfest and Twilight and the Wild Rumpus and a series of others have to buy those individual insurance policies. So I'm glad we had some discussion around this.
Mr. Neesmith, and then I'll come back to you, Ms. Dickerson.
Yeah, I doubt the insurance is going to be cheaper for the city, but moving on, it also points out that the expense of doing these kinds of special events on, on public property, especially downtown, using fireworks as an example, the insurance for shutting off fireworks downtown is very high. For the insurance for shooting, for having the fireworks display at the, at the Georgia Square Mall is relatively low. There are fewer buildings, it's private property, there's much more open space. So we, in, in having the fireworks display at, at Georgia Square also spreads the benefit of these kinds of events. The fireworks display at Georgia Square is a regional draw. If you take a look at who came to the fireworks display the two years it was there, I would estimate that well over half the cars were from outside of Clark County, some of them were four or five counties away. So we don't have to have all of our special events in public space, is my point. Athfest, absolutely. Twilight, absolutely. But let's be careful about what we want to do in public space.
Ms. Dickerson, did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, I guess I'm, I guess I'm hearing a couple of things, I want to make sure I'm hearing them right. So it seems like, and I, and I have to admit, looking at the tiers, they seem, and given the information that we've gotten from other communities, it seems like maybe not all of us agree that the tiers are necessarily set up the right way, or maybe necessary. So then I wonder why we want to push it into budget and make a decision on budget. I mean, we're going to pay for something we don't necessarily think, I mean, even if we're going to say we're going to pay for it or set aside monies, then we're setting aside monies for things that maybe we aren't really all on the board with as far as the tiers. I mean, there's a huge, you know, there is a big difference, and if other communities aren't doing, I guess I wonder what the, and I wasn't on the GOC, so I'm just kind of trying to understand, gather some understanding about, you know, why was it 500 to 5,000, you know, why was a million, two million, you know, why were those things set up, especially if we don't have other communities that are doing that? Why, you know, why, why was the risk level set that way? So.
Ms. Hamby, you want to speak?
And I could probably help answer that question. I think from the perspective of the, of the commission-defined option, and, and those that work together, work to put it together may, may agree with this, I think, that what we're asking for is sort of a delay in, in that sort of tier thing as well. So we don't, we don't really know what, what that may look like, so it allows, the commission-defined option allows us to reconsider that sort of aspect of it, and, and I guess the mayor will determine whether or not that needs to go back to government ops to, to look at that aspect of it, or, or however that comes about. But certainly, certainly we don't, you know, that's, that's where, that's how I'm reading it and how I've signed on to it as well.
Okay.
And as a side, I'm, I'm hoping all of us will dress up as insurance agents for the next Wild Rumpus, Wild Rumpus Festival.
I'm already dressed as one.
Yes.
Ms. Neesmith.
To put a finer point, I was also a co-conspirator on this commission-defined option. It wasn't, wasn't our intent to say that we'll, we'll consider that tiering at all. Our intent was to kick the can down the road, and I think, I hope this leaves enough latitude for the mayor to decide how she's going to handle this, not necessarily in our finance meeting, but it could go back to government operations or, or wherever. So I think the mayor has complete latitude as to how she wants to work further on the insurance issue.
Ms. Link.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that. I mean, it's my hope that we will also take a second look at this tiering, you know, and deter, I mean, you know, I, I feel like this doesn't necessarily define the bevy of, of special events that we have, and it could use more work. So yeah, like, like Mr. Neesmith says, you know, the intention is to kick the can down the road so we can reconsider this. And, and I would also ask the mayor that, as we do reconsider it, that we bring some of our special events organizers into this discussion. They were brought into earlier discussions of government operations when we came up with things like the parking deferment, but they weren't necessarily consulted in, in this discussion. And I had no idea that the, that the requirements would be so extremely costly. And, you know, once those figures started coming through, it was clear that this was not the way to go.
Does anybody talk that one? Actually, I think I need to clarify, because I'm, I'm sure the people out there in television land and in the audience have no idea what we're talking about. And where this originated is, I'm in the downtown, a member of Downtown Development Authority, as is Mike, and, and looking at some of our special events, and in particular parking, because ADDA controls the parking, I was wondering if we were really incurring hard costs in some of the things that we were charging for special events. And that was my purpose in assigning it to the committee, that, that we don't need to be charging our event people for things that actually are not costing us something, just because it happens. And the first thing I learned in talking to our parking director, I asked him to look at Twilight and, and the weekends before and after, to see if we actually lost revenue to meters that were taken off the street. It turns out that we don't, because it just shifts the parking, paid parking to a different place. So it costs us nothing for those meters to be covered so that they can have the race. And I thought there might even be perhaps other things. I very likely will send this back to committee again to be looked at. But, but the insurance, the ordinance, I mean, the CDO that you all have brought forward does not adopt the, the chart for the, for the, that's basically for just insurance purposes. So basically, what it's doing is saying that we're not going to charge for parking and then for the, for those, parking taken off the street, and then also for the definition of special events. But what we're trying to do is make it feasible for our community to, to have special events, which are what make Athens special. But I sat in on the committee meeting that night and listened to the discussion, and, and what was coming from staff and what was coming from our commissioners that, that brought this far for the insurance, it's not really relevant what other communities are doing regarding insurance. What this question is, is how much risk is the government willing to take for our taxpayers? And, and that, that's what we have to decide, not what, what somebody else is doing. And so I don't think that could be decided on the floor tonight. Hopefully, there'll be a way that we can take some of this pressure off our special events, but I think we've got a good CDO on the floor tonight. So have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Okay, item number 17 also has a CDO, and this is the T-SLOSS program, provokes, with some proposed revisions to the program. Who's going to speak to that, Mr. Neesmith?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioners Harrod, Dickerson, and myself collaborated on a commission-defined option that modifies just one part of this, of these proposed revisions, and that's the specific goals and project selection criteria. And it was really wordsmithing, changing emphasis, and I'll, I'll go over it quickly. The changes that we asked for is, instead of improved pavement maintenance schedule, we said significantly improved pavement maintenance schedule. To fill you in on some facts, we are $23 million behind in our street maintenance program in this county. We're spending annually $2 to $3 million on street maintenance. To keep, to, to, to just stay even, we have to spend five. So I think it's important that we look at T-SLOSS very much in terms pri, as a very high priority, our street maintenance program. Moving on, the other thing we wanted to change was the last bullet, which said promote economic development, and we are emphasizing that again, expanding it again, and asking for you to adopt the words, provide and improve infrastructure that promotes economic activity, economic redevelopment, and economic growth. Just making that criteria a little broader and a little stronger. So I like a motion that we adopt the commission-defined option.
Second.
Have a motion, second, any further discussion? Ms. Link.
I just want to point out that, that infrastructure that could promote economic activity and redevelopment doesn't necessarily have to be roads. Bike lanes and sidewalks are significant promoters of economic growth and economic activity, and they can really, in transit, definitely transit. You know, and we're seeing that come to fruition in the Chase Street corridor, where we have much more interest in that corridor, thanks to, partially thanks to the fact that we are getting bike lanes in that area. So for those out there, you know, when you think of economic development, you seem to think highways, but this, this very much also applies to some of our alternative transportation infrastructure.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just to spread the goodness a little deeper than Chase Street, there will be some proposals that I, that are given, that have been given to the advisory committee that include transportation improvements on Lexington Road, Atlanta, and Atlanta Highway, and also some improvements in the retail campus between Cleveland Road and Huntington Road, just a little project there. So it's, the ideas that we have now spread through the community pretty widely.
Any further discussion, poll vote? All in favor?
Aye.
And this is the CDO, any opposed? Okay.
Madam, may I move for suspension of rules?
Thank you, Mr. Harry. Have a motion for suspension of rules, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I will consider item number 18 under suspension of rules, and this is the proposed downtown Athens Development Authority boundary change. And for those out there in TV land and in the audience, this is basically expanding the, the borders of the Downtown Development Authority. And we, we have to vote on that, and then our legislative delegation will make a decision whether they'll drop local legislation to do that. And if they do, then we'll have a bigger boundary on our Downtown Development Authority. Any discussion on this? Mr. Gertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate it. You know, as, as we spoke about just a couple of minutes ago in the context of special events, downtown Athens is a special place, I mean, as are many parts of our community, but certainly it has a unique, unique place in Athens. We've seen over the last several decades that what people's perceptions of downtown are have certainly expanded, and the zoning definition of downtown has expanded. So, we've seen some developers wisely take advantage of opportunities to bring more amenities to downtown, to bring more residences to downtown. And what we want is an Athens Downtown Development Authority that can fully support that whole array of activity that's coming to downtown. You know, if you imagine the amount of leased square footage downtown today in 2017 versus just 20 years ago in 1997, you know, I, I imagine you'd see probably at least 100% increase over what we had at that point, if not even more. And, and so this means that we need a downtown development authority that can take on not only the sheer volume of work, but really the array of challenges that I think all of us want to see downtown. More integrated downtown, a downtown with a greater variety of activity, a downtown that appeals to a wide cross-section of our community. And so, part of the way we do that is to ensure that to the greatest degree possible are ADDA boundaries, that is, the boundaries wherein property owners pay an additional mill of tax on an annual basis. So, you know, in rough terms, paying about 34 rather than 33 mills a year. We draw the boundaries correctly for what really is downtown. And so, I'm, I'm glad that the General Assembly has moved forward with this this year. It's taken us a few years to sort of get our ducks in a row. And, and they provided a charge, which was that the ADDA put a call for responses of the new folks who would be included within the ADDA boundaries. I mean, unfortunately, there, there are a couple of folks who elected not to be part of these boundaries. A couple of them, I think, rationally so, you know, very small-scale residential properties. One very small-scale commercial property that really doesn't hew to the, the scale or the size of, of what's allowed downtown. There's one large property, the Mark, that is not included. That's a disappointment to me, and I certainly hope that those folks will recognize that there are benefits in being in the ADDA district down the road. And so, you know, maybe two years or five years from now, you know, they'll ask to be into the district. But I don't want to let that disappointment color the fact that this is an enormous opportunity for the future of downtown, to, to have all of those things that I mentioned earlier. And so, I'm, I'm glad to be able to bring this map to our local delegation, and I encourage them to, to pass this as soon as possible. And so, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Have motion, we have a second.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Link?
Yeah, I'll share some of Commissioner Gertz's disappro- disappointments in the Mark for not opting in. This is a huge property. I think it's about 1,000 bedrooms. I think it's close to a million square feet. I took a virtual tour of it today, and it's very impressive. And it will, it will bring a lot more people, these residents will certainly be enjoying our downtown, you know, enjoying our infrastructure downtown and the services that are provided by the ADDA, paid for by the ADDA. And I picked up their brochure, and, you know, the first thing they tout is the ultimate downtown location. So, they're certainly marketing themselves based on being downtown, and their zoning is commercial downtown. So, I just want to point out my additional disappointment in this property not agreeing to be a part of downtown officially, yet they will be definitely enjoying all the amenities of downtown.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Neesmith?
I'll go further about the Mark. Not only will they be enjoying the benefits of what ADDA does, but they'll be wearing down downtown. They'll be using it. And so, I think for them, which there would be fully at least 10% of the total downtown acreage, for them to opt out, if you will, is just, I don't understand it. It just, it just doesn't make any sense to me. I hope they'll take another look at it.
Ms. Hamby?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I certainly hope, hopefully, hopefully we'll get the support for extending to bound town districts. And I'll just focus on, on those that have, have elected to opt in and the benefits there that, that I hope that they'll realize from, as a, as a business owner. Certainly, the Downtown Development Authority in, in, in most recent years has been working on a facade grant program that several of our established buildings downtown have taken advantage of. I'll point to, for example, the Walk Street Building. Commissioner Gertz and I were staying on a street corner lamenting one day about how, how it looked. And, and just a few weeks later, it looks a lot better, and that's in part because of the facade grant program. But we're also, hopefully, within this month or next month, we'll have established a small business revolving loan program whereby a business that needs some help getting through, through some slow summer months might come to the ADDA and, and be afforded an opportunity to get, to get a loan to help them fix their refrigerator, or to, or to do something that, you know, in a lot of essence, for a small business can be, can be really expensive, and also makes you wonder where, where you can get the money from to keep you going into those, into those busy fall months and, 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 and winter and spring months come along. So, hopefully that will help, help with that. But we just also got through talking about CEP funds within, or about special events. So, with an expandery of a downtown district, there's, it opens the door for a larger, different types of venues to hold these special events and also apply for the community event program money that, that we, that this commission allocates and the Downtown Development Authority makes recommendations on. And, and hopefully, those, those are just a few of the, of the examples that the Downtown Development Authority can help with business owners. But they can also help with regards to advocacy, or if you're a new business. I know they're a new business trying to get established. I know we've talked before about some sort of ombudsman, and, and the authority could help with that to, to help go through our, our plans review and planning spots as well. So, so there are advantages, and I look forward to seeing, seeing where this goes.
I hesitated as to whether or not, whether I should say anything about this or not, but I think I should. I talked to, to one of the principals in the Mark. In fact, I've talked to him a couple of times in the last couple of weeks, and he has not said no. He said, no, not now. And I, I really think that we need to be careful about publicly, publicly criticizing one of our business people in the community for a business decision that they make, that we don't know all the details behind it. And perhaps we didn't do a good enough job of giving them the benefits of being in downtown, or they might have decided to do something sooner. But I just, it was disturbing me to hear criticism of a, of a, of a business that's, that's, that's increasing our tax base significantly. And, and I believe they're working to do a good job in their project because of the business decision they made. So, with that, I'll call for question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number 19, Mr. Behrman, will you read the ordinance for us?
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia with respect to special use approval in the CN Commercial Neighborhood District on the parcel of land located at 1595 South Lumpkin Street and for other purposes.
Okay. Is there a moment on open discussion, make a motion?
Uh-huh.
Oh, I'm sorry, folks. Where'd our paying commission items? Would anyone like to speak to item number 19?
I'll be brief. I'm David Matheny. I live at 200 Mount Vernon Place. Of course, I'm here on behalf of Barrett Investments, seeking approval of this special use lot for Five Points area. And I want to thank you for your, in advance, for your thoughtful consideration of this approval, and to also let you know that I'm here if there's any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matheny. I'm sorry I overlooked you. We'll come behind the rail now. Ms. Bell, would you like to start this conversation?
Yes, I would. I, I don't know how many of you are aware that we are working on parking and the issues in Five Points, but to get something like this taken care of that helps one portion of what we need to be addressed. And I, I'm just pleased to know that we can give this support, and I definitely want us to move forward to vote positive on this.
Would you like to make the motion?
I'd like to make the motion. Thank you.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number 20, we would have public input on that if anyone would like to speak to it. And this is a text amendment regarding building materials. Anyone wish to speak to that? Okay. Mr. Behrman, would you read the ordinance for us, please?
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia with respect to site design standards and for other purposes.
Okay. Mr. Gertz, I think you're welcome to meet with us.
Just following up on comments I made a couple of weeks ago at the agenda-setting meeting, I just want to thank Brad and his staff for being responsive to some of the nuances that, that happened in the building community. I think this is an example where they saw a couple of cases within a couple of months and made a pivot in the code as a result. So, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Second.
Have motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we've got one more text amendment, and this is on tree management regarding streetscapes trees, trees. Is there anyone that would like to address that?
I'm playing the Lorax tonight. I have a real problem with the way we plant trees and right-ofways, and that mostly occurs when there, we plant oak trees next to power lines, and then the power company comes through and just whacks the top off of them. The tree, it's, we need to do something else. I mean, it's just really bad planning. If we know the power lines are going to be there, we don't need to plant trees that are going to interfere with the power lines. Maybe move them back into the property farther. I'm, I'm not sure with all the context of this, but I'm just speaking on behalf of myself being an arborist and a landscape consultant. When I see this stuff, I just go, really? Like, is this the best we could do? So, I hope that this, that we wind up with a situation where we don't have trees that are too big for the location. And I guess that's it. Trees are important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Anyone else wish to speak to this? Okay, Bell, I believe you've got a couple of ordinances for us?
I do. The first is an ordinance to amend the code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia with respect to community tree management, street trees, and for other purposes. Next is an ordinance to amend the code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia with respect to community tree management, development limitations, and for other purposes.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Link, and I'll come back to you, Mr. Neesmith. I'm sorry.
Um, I just want to address Mr. McConnell's concern. I believe now we have lists of approved tree species to avoid those kind of problems with oversized trees being planted near. Is that correct, Brad? Maybe you can speak on that a little bit.
We do have a tree list that has been part of the ordinance all along. What we do not have currently, and what this amendment is intended to allow us, we do not have administrative authority of staff to allow the developer, if he has room, to back the oak tree away from the street. And that's, if, if adopted, that's what this will do internally as part of our plan review process in lieu of requiring him to be in that general proximity of a power line.
So, this should, this should
This does exactly what Mark is asking about.
Exactly what Mark is concerned about.
All right. Mr. Neesmith?
Brad, going a little further, this also says that the, the arborist approves the trees to be planted, does it not?
It does.
So, would that mean that the arborist can avoid putting oak trees underneath the power line?
We can, we have the ability to go as far as the size of tree, to avoid putting them under. We don't have the additional ability to go in. We don't have them, we don't have the ability, and this does not change that, to require them to plant a dogwood if they want to plant a red bud. And I don't think this ordinance was ever intended for that much control.
No.
But it does allow us, and it always has allowed us, to, to deny or, or to allow to move the tree size.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Oh, I'll move that we approved.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I had something that I was going to tell you all in the mayor's, in the mayor's remarks at the end of the meeting, but I think it's more appropriate to tell you right now. Athens, Clark County has been recognized, I just got this letter yesterday, by the Arbor Day Foundation as, giving us recognition as a 2016 Tree City USA. That should make Mark McConnell very happy. Okay, so now we'll go to citizen input on anything that was not on tonight's agenda.
Good evening, Mayor Commission. Tim Denson, 290 Midway Road. So, Athens for Everyone and the Athens Inside Discrimination Movement are still calling on the ACC government to fulfill its obligation to protecting the civil and human rights of all its residents by immediately creating an Athens Civil Rights Committee. Since early 2016, more than 14 months now, Athens Inside Discrimination Movement and Athens for Everyone have been advocating for the establishment of an Athens Civil Rights Committee. Such a committee would be comprised of a diverse body of residents, whose purpose would be to assist people navigating the process of filing discrimination harassment complaints, research and evaluate current problems and possible solutions, make official recommendations to the ACC County Government on how to effectively address discrimination, and advocate, educate, and promote mutual respect and understanding in Athens. As you all know, on November 1st, 2016, this body passed an anti-discrimination ordinance with a directive for the county staff to study variations of human relations committees and to bring those recommendations to the Mayor Commission. Well, seven days after that vote was done on November 1st, things became more dire, at least in my opinion, and I probably think, and probably in the opinion of most of you all. In the Northeast Georgia area, since November 8th, we have seen a member of the LGBTQ community beaten here in downtown, swastikas written on the door of a Mexican restaurant that I love to go to myself here, deportations of our undocumented community throughout Northeast Georgia, xenophobic legislation and policies proposed on the state level and passed on the federal level, hateful legislation against our undocumented friends and family here on the state level and the national level, One Piece HB 37, actually cosponsored by one of our own state representatives, Chuck Williams here in town, protections for transgender residents deteriorated, and even the UGA College Republicans just last week hosting Phil Kent, who is the leader of a group designated as a hate group by the Southern Law and Poverty Center. This was just last week. All of these things have been happening in the last few months. I don't think we can ignore the stuff that's going on and think that somehow it's going to improve over the next three years. We've needed an Athens Civil Rights Committee before Donald Trump became president, but we need one even more now. And this is not only to fight the bad things that are going on. And this is something I think hasn't been spoken enough, and so I want to, not only can the Athens Civil Rights Committee fight the bad things, but it can help foster the good things. It can help foster more community, it can help foster more diversity, it can help foster more compassion. This is a no-brainer, folks, especially now. And so, I hope that we can speed up this process and create an Athens Civil Rights Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen.
Good evening. I'm Russell Edwards from 400 Duncan Springs Road. I remember three years ago, qualifying ended for the last local election, and my son Teddy was born. So, tonight is his third birthday, and I'm, I'm working on the issue I'm about to talk about with, with my son in mind and with the good feelings that came three years ago. I circulated a letter that some of you all probably read in the Banner Herald, and I'll just briefly read parts of it. The title is, "Please Bring the Fourth of July Fireworks Back to Downtown Athens." We write today to plead the Athens Clark County Government to fully fund downtown Fourth of July celebration. Last year's celebration was the most unifying and uplifting Athens event we have ever experienced. It must not be forgotten. Many thousands of people attended. Black, white, Latinx, Asian, and others joined in common celebration of our great nation. Baby carriages abounded. The elderly safely navigated the closed streets to enjoy the music, food trucks, and family-friendly programming. An economically diverse crowd took part. The Fourth illustrated the community to which we aspire, one that is diverse and inclusive of all people. It's important now more than ever that the government do more downtown for families. There's no denying that downtown's new luxury apartments serve a small segment of Athens. Downtown must not be known as a playground for the privileged. The Mayor and Commission's moratorium on new apartment complexes and bars puts a sharp edge on that point. Downtown must welcome and serve all people, and large-scale public events do that. What we saw at last year's Fourth should make us all proud. People of all backgrounds celebrated without incident. It was beautiful. It was a healthy dose of democracy for the body politic. We were downtown for the Fourth of July, along with people from across the Northeast Georgia region. The economic impact cannot be underestimated. Attendees packed restaurants in the hottest part of the summer, and many retailers thankfully stayed open late. It's no secret that downtown business revenue drops in the dog days of summer. A vibrant Fourth of July event, along with A vibrant Fourth of July event, along with Athfest, lures needed customers from throughout the region. Most importantly, these people visit downtown and find reasons to come back. Please put it in the budget so we won't have to keep having this debate every spring. This letter's been signed by Rusty Hery of Hery's, Devon Clower Frontier, Doc Elders, Chamber Commerce, Morgan Miller, The Indigo Child, Marleya Batia, Tina's Fine Diamonds, Daniel Wine, High Country Outfitters, Andrew Dingman, Vape Dynamics, Chantel Mulcher, Pouch Pies, Jim Adams, Adams Optics, Jason Leonard, Flanagan's, Ryan Myers, Amici's, Frank Cortez, Little Italy, Katie Jacobs, Cheeky Peach, just a few more, sorry, John Con Froggers, Chef Joseph Houston, Five Restaurant, Ann Shepherd, Chick Music, Patrick DePaulo, Cutters Pub, Maggie Rice, The Impeccable Pig, Nathaniel Mitchell, Walks Through Records, Derek Bucinski, Epiphany, Bo Frees, Max Canada, Homer Wilson, Wilson's Barbershop, Joey Tatum, Little Kings, Peter Ahkum's Fashions, BJ Hardy, Doggone Go Barbecue, Patricia Ruppert's Burg, Armed Studio, David Parahone, the world famous Norm Schultz, The Globe, just three more, Peter Dale, The National, Tony Brown, Brown's Barbershop, Jill Furman, Margot Sterling Silver, Stephanie Williamson, Atomic Vintage, and Devon Cole, Treehouse of Athens. And those are just the folks that I could get to with Teddy in tow. So please hear from these local business owners. Thank you.
Russell, you didn't major in math either, did you?
No.
That last, that last three was five.
Madam Denson, ladies and gentlemen of the commission, my name is John Becker. I'm a resident of the East Side, and I am speaking as a resident of the East Side, not as my more kind of public role at the food bank. First off, I want to congratulate you guys. I don't know if you all have been over the Southeast Clark Park. The playground that you all put in is a gem, and it's not just a gem for Athens. I had a family down from Charlotte. They don't have anything like it. Okay? So this is a gem for the southeast, really fabulous. You go out there, people from all walks of life, all colors, a very diverse body of people, children out there playing, having a really fabulous time. They need some more parking out there. There's, there's just not enough parking. You all created such a fabulous park. People are coming from everywhere, and they're loving it, and they're having a great time. So I don't know if there's a way you could contract with the AME Church across the street or?
That's what this is, John.
Excellent. You guys are fabulous. Anyway, I just want to let you know what a fabulous park that is. It's so good to see that and a great job.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Devon Clower. I live at 375 and a half Holman Avenue. I'm also the owner of Frontier on Clayton Street. I would like to speak tonight in support of budgeting in the fireworks to have downtown Athens. There's many advantages to owning a business in downtown Athens, but along with these advantages comes some difficulties, one of which is a misconception that downtown is not friendly, family-friendly enough. We have some great events that make strides to do this, but the success of last year's fireworks blasted through that barrier to show us how fun it is to enjoy downtown with such a diverse sampling of our community. I've never encountered such a diverse and pleasant crowd at any event in Athens in general and specifically in downtown Athens. We saw complete success in getting families downtown for the whole afternoon. They stayed into the evening for the fireworks. This event planted a positive association of downtown with everyone who attended. In turn, they will be more inclined to visit and participate in future downtown events. From a business point of view, we saw a measurable increase in foot traffic and sales during the afternoon and into the early evening in the middle of July. It was huge. The mood was pleasant and leisurely. Everyone let us know how much fun they were having participating in all of the events, as well as just exploring and supporting all of the downtown businesses leading up to the fireworks. The response to last year's fireworks festival has been extremely positive, and many want it to be an annual event. I think it would be a shame and a missed opportunity not to harness on this excitement and success of last year and put it towards an even better event this year and for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clower.
Hello once again. I wanted to invite you all to come out to see the movie Before the Flood. If you haven't seen it, this is the second time we're showing. We showed it back in October at the university. It's a documentary on climate change. Leonardo DiCaprio and Martin Scorsese directed it, and it's free. It's at Live Wire Athens on Wednesday, the 15th of this month. So if you can, if you'd like to, come out and see it. It's a very powerful movie. And I think everyone, since we are all environmentalists because we all appreciate clean air and clean water, it's kind of our duty to take responsibility as humans to make sure that we know what's going on. And this really is getting your foot in the water and understanding what's happening to our environment. So I've got a copy for each of you that I'll give to you afterwards.
Give it to Bill, and he'll get them to us.
Okay. There you go. Thank you, Bill. I did make a copy for you guys up front, but I'm sure you can share it. And also, there's something that's happening in the near future here with biomass production. Think that maybe you've heard about the old LP plant up on 441 is looking to make pellets, wood pellets. And this is something that is supposed to be clean energy, but it's anything but that. We'll be losing huge amounts of forest around the region to go to these biomass plants where they will process this material into pellets that will then be trucked to Savannah and then put on ships and then taken across the Atlantic Ocean to Belgium and then trucked to facilities from there where they'll burn them so they don't burn coal. And not burning coal is a really good idea, but cutting down all our trees over here and shipping them across the ocean is stupid. And the traffic that it will bring, it's something like 100 trucks each, each way every day, over 200 trucks up and down 441. This is about a mile from Sandy Creek Park. There were issues with this plant in the past making their OSB boards. It's something that's on the radar right now. They're, they're trying to get legisla, or trying to make this happen, and there's a lot of groups that are opposing this and for very, very good reasons. We, Georgia Climate Change Coalition, are partnering with the Dogwood Alliance to help bring about awareness of what's going on with this. So you can look forward to seeing some movies on this in the near future, too, as Georgia Climate Change Coalition will be hosting a movie a month, and hopefully maybe we'll be doing two at different locations. Cine might be one of those. So if you don't get a chance to see Before the Flood over here, hopefully we're going to be able to bring it to Cine on a weekend. Thank you all very much for what you do.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. And I think it would be appropriate to clarify that the wood pellet facility that Mark's referring to is not in Athens, Clark County.
Good evening. To our mayor and all of our commissioners, my name is Homer Wilson, right here in Athens, Georgia, downtown Athens, Georgia, known as Hot Corner. If you don't know where Hot Corner is, just come on downtown. You'll find us down there. We come here tonight because we really enjoy downtown Athens. And we call it LA, lovely Athens downtown. Beautiful place. A lot goes on, but there's always room for improvement in our wonderful city. I come to talk just a little bit on the celebration for Fourth of July. Born in a rural town in Covert, Georgia, and we have one every year, right there in Carver. Live out on the east side. They say I'm part of Winneville, but I live in Clark County, who have one out there. I rise here tonight to say, let's continue to have this celebration downtown. Great event, great fellowship, great coming together from all walks of life, from the baby carriage to the wheelchair to the walking, the crushes, gray-haired, no hair, they all gather together at this celebration. We had a good time. We danced, we ate, and ate, and ate. And after that, we come on back down on Hot Corner, and the rest was history down there. Let's think real serious about continuing to have great events for the family from all walks of life in our city. We love you all. You all do a great work. And with that for you, you don't need us to do the work for you, but you know you don't see me much, but you know I wanted something when I showed it tonight. But I hope you'll think about this. Let's do it. Let's make Athens a great Fourth of July celebration downtown Athens. Thank you all for your time.
Homer, we don't see you much, so it's important when we do see you. It's good to see you tonight.
Rusty Hery, 479 Cobb Street, and I'm here to support the fireworks coming back downtown. Also, I appreciate Homer recognizing those of us with no hair. Thank Homer. And I want to thank and commend the mayor and commission and the ADDA last year for rescuing the fireworks and bringing them downtown when it looked like we weren't going to have a show at all. That last minute, a lot of things came together in a hurry and a lot of money was spent that we'd never really asked for before or seen from the county or the ADDA. But it was a great event, and I think we will all agree with that. As I said, I live on Cobb Street, and I left my house, I think we had the fireworks and the celebration a couple of days before the actual Fourth. But I walked down Cobb, and I got to Prince Avenue, and all of a sudden, people are streaming down the street, looked almost like a football game. And talk was full, hinder shots was full, and Prince Avenue was buzzing. I keep going down the street, and it was a total family-friendly event with everybody in the community of great mixture. Around the corner, the Baptist Church, and the steps are full, and they're full of everybody, all walks of life. It truly was a community event, and it was a family-friendly event. And I hope you all, everybody showed up, I guess, from the mayor and commission. If you did, you really missed a wonderful thing. It was like the Christmas parade, but a little different. I went to the Christmas parade when my kids were small, and they grew, thank goodness, I was ready to get away from it at some point, but I've got a two-year-old granddaughter, so I guess I'll be going back to the Christmas parade again soon also. Point being, I went by the Baptist Church, and then I walked up Hancock, and then I cut over at City Hall. You can't see the fireworks for the trees, and then you can't see the fireworks from the, I mean, I want, I'd hate to call it the Red Building, the Southern Mutual Building, sorry Fred. But then I went, got to Clayton Street, and I walked further, and it was just awesome. And it really was, and when we talk about Athens and we show people, come to our community, we don't show them the Atlanta Highway. We show them downtown Athens. We show them College Square. People decide to move to Athens, that's how we promote. So I'm going to run out of time, and I just want to say that I'm in full support of it, and I will work very hard to help you guys as you make the decision to bring it back downtown, to make it a great event like it was last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Rusty. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, well, we're going to come behind the rail, and we've got a few reports we need to get. The first one is from me. We've had another group adopt an area to keep clean because people keep throwing the trash on the street. And I still ask them, please quit doing that. Falling Shoals Home and Order Association has adopted Quit Davis Road from Barnet Shoals Road to Old Lexington Road, and thank you very much to that group. I've already told you all about the tree ordinance, and so I believe that's all I've got tonight. Mr. Manager Johnson, do you have anything for us? Mr. Berryman?
Nothing, thanks.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, ma'am, I have one item. On the 14th, next Tuesday, I will be presenting at the work session a review of the board's authorities and commission's report.
Right, thank you. And so now we'll, we'll get comments and reports from our commissioners, and we'll start with Mr. Neesmith, go clockwise around the room, and end up with Mr. Hamby.
Well, okay, thank you. Save the best for last.
I'm going to go right to the mistletoe, Mr. Hamby.
Oh, goodness, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I don't know if you've noticed the mistletoe that are in the trees around our beautiful City Hall there.
I have actually noticed.
That mistletoe will kill those trees. And we need to remove it, and we probably need to remove it before the trees bud this spring, which will cost some money. Going out for bid, it, we don't possibly have the time, so we need to search for ways that we can contract to have this mistletoe removed. Perhaps the downtown development authority could pitch in. I don't know. But we, it's been brought to my attention, and I've noticed that you can't see it in summertime because the leaves cover it, but that is, that will kill the trees. The roots grow into the tree and suck the life out of it, and the limbs have to be cut off.
I knew it was a parasite. I'd know it'd kill the trees.
Yeah, it will kill the trees.
Sure Mr. Johnson's taking notes, so, thank you. Mr. Berryman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It can live symbiotically with the trees as long as it doesn't overpower them, as long as there's not too many mistletoe plants on one tree. But yes, this is a parasite. It does take the nutrients away from the host plant. So if there are too many, it can be destructive. Just want to put that out.
Thank you, sir.
A little clarification. Other than that, I have nothing except I'm always very thankful to our staff for all their help, and especially to Ms. Jeanz Bratlin, who does so much for us. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lake?
I'd always heard you could shoot mistletoe out of a tree.
Actually, I know people harvested that way. My brother, he used to.
That's the way you harvested, for kissing.
But that doesn't take the, the actual parts that's growing into the tree.
Tamper it back a little bit.
Yeah, it'll grow back.
Um, I want to address something that Mr. Tim Denson brought up in the Civil Rights Committee, and I know that we'll be hearing more about this from management in the next couple, two or three, four months or so. And I do want to reiterate the concerns that, you know, some of these instances of bigotry and discrimination and outright hate are becoming definitely way more prevalent, and there are instances that we don't, I mean, we've heard well-publicized ones, but there are also instances on campus that are not getting publicized. It appears that folks have become emboldened. You know, we have a White House administration that is issuing orders that are pretty discriminatory, and it's definitely emboldening certain segments of our culture. And I feel like now more than ever, we need to have some means in our local government to address these kinds of issues. So I look forward to hearing from management in the coming months about this issue and about installing an actual citizen committee to address these issues. And I want to thank the folks who came to speak about the fireworks. It looks like there are quite a few downtown business owners who are really interested in this issue, so maybe we can solicit some of their help and organization and soliciting sponsorship. I know it's an extremely expensive endeavor, so perhaps we can kind of have a community effort in pursuing this.
Mr. Gerst?
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Sands?
Yes, Madam Mayor, one thing, you had a letter that was sent by Mr. Elliot Walker regarding a name change, and we do have a name change policy that was sent to everyone, and the name of Ms. Virginia Walker, Callaway Kofa Walker, he was requested, Ms. Walker, has, it was, I've known Ms. Walker for more than 50 years, and she was very instrumental in having certain things take place in Athens, very outspoken person. She was a voice for, for people who didn't have a voice, especially for minority participation. She worked very diligently and very closely with, actually helping create the Neighborhood Health Center and get, and working with Mrs. Evelyn C. Neely and Ms. Miriam Moore and Jessie Barnett. Those were stalwart people in, in our community. And I talked to Mr. And I talked to Mr. Walker several years, several months ago about this, and then he sent you a letter. So, I'm going to put in a request that we make this name change. I remember I was reluctant about making name changes by virtue of the fact that there are a number of citizens that probably would also could go on there, but I'm going to make this request for Ms. Walker. She's, and her health is not the greatest now either, but she has, you know, been a good contributor to the eastern part of Athens-Clark County.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. I remember all those ladies you named very well, too. And Bill, I don't, I've, I've seen the policy. It's been a while. What, does this need to go to committee, or does it need to come back as an ordinance, or how do we need to handle that?
I'll have to go look at the policy. I can't remember right now.
We'll, we'll deal with it, Mr. Sims, whatever it takes. Ms. Dickerson.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. First of all, I do want to clarify a statement made by Mr. Denson. The swash, swashcows that were mentioned were not at an Athens-Clark County restaurant. It was in a neighboring county. I know for a fact, so just want to clear that up. I also want to mention, I did hand out to all the commissioners a little postcard about 100 Days of Action, and basically, it's just an opportunity to reaffirm our civic values and participate, build our community more. There's lots of activities that are going on. This is a volunteer effort. If you're interested, you can go to myathensis.com and then forward slash 100daysathens, or Facebook 100daysathens, and find out about some of the activities. The other thing I want to mention is, on February the 28th and March 1st, we had our community stakeholder meetings for Envision Athens at the Classic Center. I know there were several people in the room that were able to go. We had 150 organizations identifying individuals from their organization to attend that two-day event, where they provided some insight, not only in their topic area of expertise, but also in all the other areas that we've talked about are important in our community. And what I think is important and to reiterate is that this is not a government activity. I realize I'm part of the government, but my co-chair is a business owner, Bob Gooch. It's basically, it's local state government getting, getting together with nonprofits in the private business sector to continue to communicate and collaborate on what our future will look like in the next 20 years. It is still a very unprecedented process, and the fact that we have all those people, all the players at the table, we've made a good effort, I think, at making sure that we have, you know, diversified our group from age, gender, race, ethnicity, and I think that helps, that's going to help inform our, you know, making sure that this vision that comes out of this and the action plan that comes out of it is inclusive of everybody's interest. It'll also obviously inform our Athens-Clark County Conference of Land Use Plan, which is important, too. One of the things that was really neat about the process, and I got a lot of feedback from some of the individuals that were there, some, you know, obviously, a lot of these organizations, all these organizations are working in some form or fashion in the community, but they've never really been in a process like this. And what made it different is, I'll give you an example. We had Amy Cassane from Athens-Clark Heritage Foundation was there, I think, under Cultural Resources. I apologize if I had that wrong, but there were like 10 areas. But she came in and she provided her input on, to some questions specific to cultural resources. And then she left that. Instead of leaving the building, she stayed, and she went to all the other nine in two days. She went to all the other areas, economic development, transportation, infrastructure, culture, let's say, art, art, I guess, cultural resources, social, social services. There were 10 areas. And everybody, so what it did was, it basically, you know, cross-pollinated ideas. It gave, it gave the person that was, let's say, Amy, and from her perspective was saying, well, she's always talking about cultural resources, but now she's going to talk about economic development. She's going to look at it from the cultural resource side, as well as how the economic development may impact them. So, it really was, I think, really eye-opening for everybody that was there, and I've only received really positive feedback from it, so I'm really excited. So, the next steps, just so the public knows, the next steps are that we, we've received that input. All of that has been captured. The UGA Carl Vincent Institute of Government, where the facilitators, they're creating a report that we should have by the end of this week, first of next week, at the latest. That information will be, then be sent back to the stakeholders for, for their feedback, make sure that we haven't missed anything that was said, or, or said, or maybe interpreted something wrong if it was written down wrong. And then, planning next is going to analyze and summarize. That's our consultant's going to summarize the information, as well as the information we got from our 22 focus groups and from the over 600 citizens that participated in the focus group, Focus on the Future workshops in January. And then we'll determine what targeted research we may need to do to get more information about, you know, where we might want to go on those, on those issues as we prepare potential recommendations for the plan and for the steering committee to consider. So, the next big step for the public, though, is April 20th, and I'll put some of these out in the hallway, but April 20th is the community summit, and at that summit, we'll actually be doing some polling of some of the ideas, so you'll actually get to quote "vote," sort of on priority issues. So, it's really important you make time for that. That will be April 20th from 5:30 until 7:30 at the Classic Center, and I encourage everybody to stay in touch through envisionathens.com or through our Facebook page. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Dickerson. Ms. Bell.
Yes. Last Wednesday morning, we had a Five Points Business Association meeting, and I was driving to the meeting because I had to be at another meeting immediately after, so I didn't walk from my business down. And all of a sudden, I'm stopping because I see a light. They've put in our crosswalk lights, and it was so exciting to see the safety of what it's presenting. And I know Commissioner Wright is, is not here tonight to say thank you also, and she may do it in a later meeting, but I wanted to thank the energy of our group and also the transportation for what they've done to make things that was badly needed in Five Points. Thank you.
Ms. Hamby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just have a couple of things. One was, is from a constituent who brought up the mistletoe situation, and I always thought mistletoe was a good thing, but now I realize it sucks the life out of you. I'm going to stay away from it.[1692.36][1692.36](Laughter). So, as Jerry Neesmith puts, so, so, at any rate, I'll add my voice to the, to the mistletoe dilemma, and maybe there's something we can do about it and, and see if we can save some of the trees. And I say that simply, too, because, you know, if it is impacting the trees, the work that we'll soon hopefully be doing on Clayton Street and some other areas downtown, we'll, we'll take out some of our aging trees, and we'll need all the tree canopy we can get after that, and if mistletoe's in the way, then we should get rid of it. The second thing is, I've had several requests, several requests about looking at the speed limit on Timothy Road. Right now, it's at 45 miles an hour, and certainly Timothy Road is a very neighborhood-centric street, a lot of neighborhoods along Timothy Road. Certainly neighborhood, certainly Timothy Road is experiencing some development pressures along there that, that, I'm just trying to look down the road and see what we can do to help lower that speed limit and make it a safer road for, for the neighborhood residents along that stretch of highway, because people, quite frankly, do go, do go quite fast down that road, and anything we can do about it. I know that some of the state requirements are a little bit onerous, but, but if we can find a way, there's always loopholes, so, so if we can find a way to figure that out, that would be good. And with that said, I'll go ahead and make a motion to adjourn.
On in favor. Any pose. Do not everybody.